It's 7 o'clock and I will call the Manchester zoning board of appeals to order on Wednesday, July 17. We will be beginning with the 16 Loading Place Road, which was continued from June without any discussion. So Georgia is a new member on the board, but since there was no discussion, it's not going to be a issue. Okay. I move to open the continued public hearing for the application of Luke Verbis for a special permit under sections 5.3, 6.3, 7.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief as may be necessary to add about 900 square feet to the footprint of a non-conforming residential structure and to add dormers to expand the second floor, the existing structure which encroaches into the side setback at 16 Loading Place Road, assessors map number 37, lot number 49 in District A filed with the town clerk on May 13, 2024. Do I have a second?
A second.
Sean seconds. All in favor opening the public hearing?
I am.
I agree.
With that, Mr. Bruker, you're going to present the application of the applicants?
Yes, please. Yeah, my name is Remco Bruker. I'm Bruker Design LLC in town and in charge of the design here. The owners here, Luke Verbis and Robin Hume are here as well. And so we had a meeting yesterday, the site visit. A number of you were in attendance there. And we started off with explaining how large the site is, how long the site is essentially, and also how far it really is, the house, from the neighbors. And I think that's a large part of why we would like to apply for this special permit. If you see here, this is the access point off of Loading Place Road and long driveway over here to the house. And then the border with the side yards extend even further. So the house is really pretty much sighted almost halfway in the length of the site itself. It is non-conforming in the area that I've highlighted in yellow here. It's not conforming in the side yard setback. And the majority of the house sits within the building envelope. So the project really is to expand the house by height and also by square footage. And the majority of that expansion actually falls well within the side yard setbacks, so within the building envelope. And but we are also requesting for a small area to be expanded on the second floor in the non-conforming section. That's why we're here. Had we not asked for that, then our expansions of the house itself, the larger part of the house, we wouldn't have to do the meeting. So the house itself right now, it doesn't necessarily suit the owner's requirements and it has low ceiling heights. They would like to expand the house and make it a better, energy-efficient home and do some more interesting things on the inside. But along with that expansion came a request to add two dormers. And that's in this area right here on top of the existing garage. In that case, there's, on that garage is a ridge height there that we are not asking to elevate further. So the overall height of the non-conforming section of the building will stay the same. And so we're just adding, asking for additional head height, if you will, for those dormers. And then the additional areas that we're expanding are also in yellow here. Those are actually one-story expansions on the side of the house, really. The main ridge of the house is here. That will go up roughly three feet, not two foot six. Like I said yesterday, I checked the plans and it's roughly three feet. We're still under the requirement of 35-foot maximum height. We're around 33 foot three, I believe, 30 a bit more than the plans 2.0. And so we feel that the request for additional height in that area is not to any detriment to any neighbors. Very few people can see the house, certainly now that the trees are up. Very few people can actually really notice what we'd be doing there and whether leaves are down. There's really only three houses and they're quite far away. And we feel there's absolutely no impact on them. And so that's why we feel this expansion is okay.
Am I correct that the butter on the side for which you're approaching into the setback is conservation land?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So for people who weren't at the site visit, you couldn't see any?
I'm looking at a map right now. I can't see it.
Yeah. Georgia, any questions? No questions, no. John? Rob?
So you have the room labeled as a guest suite? Is the, is the application simply just to add dormers in a non-conforming location? Or is this also to create a two-family house?
No, the guest suite is really just for literally what is meant to be a guest suite. So a bedroom, a bathroom, and a closet. It is not a guest unit or additional.
So there won't be any cooking devices?
That's correct.
No second means of egress? Locked doors?
Nope. Nope. Nope, we did not put it on.
Nothing else on the plans we don't know about?
I don't think so.
It's going to be added in the future?
Well, you know, I can't speak for what happens after the renovations, but you know, our plans indicate what the intention is.
Okay. Very good.
Sean?
No questions.
Is there any member of the public in the room who would like to be heard on this application? Is there any member of the public on Zoom who would like to be heard? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom so you can be recognized. I see, no hands raised. So we're ready to close the public hearing? Okay. I, whoops, did you have something, Sean?
No, I just acknowledged you.
Oh, okay. I move to close the public hearing and enter into deliberations with respect to the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Georgia seconds. Vote. Georgia.
I made the vote to issue the special permit?
No.
Sorry, I was just going to say you're putting me on the spot.
You're just voting to close the public hearing?
Oh, yes, I voted to close the public hearing.
Approved, yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. Now I'll make a motion.
There we go.
Well, first I'll say, we should have deliberations. So what's the feeling of the board on the application? Are there any concerns?
No, I mean, living in that area, excuse me, lose all my voice. There's, you can't even see the house.
No, I mean, they're just, you know, building up in a structure that already exists.
I'm fine with it.
I was going to, they are going up, but it's within the bylaw height restrictions. Granted, it's non-conforming, but they're not even increasing the height on the non-conforming part, so.
Well, I think usually we're concerned about increased mass in a non-conforming structure if it's close to another house, but because it's a budding conservation, it isn't exactly.
This lot is so, so large, I don't think it's
Right.
going to be detrimental to anything.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the application of Luke Verbis for a special permit under sections 5.3, 6.3, 7.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief as may be necessary at 16 Loading Place Road, assessors map number 37, lot number 49 in District A, filed with the town clerk on March 13, May 13, 2024. Based on a finding, the addition to the footprint of the structure, an addition of dormers to expand the second floor is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not substantially, will not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located than the existing non-conforming structure, and the requirements and conditions under section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met. Based on the condition, the construction project, which includes approximately 900 square foot of additional footprint and two dormers to expand the second floor of the existing structure which encroaches into the side setback, proceeds substantially in accordance with the following plans prepared by Bruker Design LLC dated May 2, 2024. T 1.0 proposed site plan. C 1.0 existing property survey. A 1.1 proposed first floor plan. A 1.2 proposed second floor plan. A 2.0 proposed elevation. A 2.1 proposed elevation and section. Do I have a second?
A second.
Sean seconds. You ready to vote? Rob?
Yes.
Sean?
Approved.
Georgia? Yes. John?
Yes.
Sarah? Would anybody like to?
I can do it.
Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Sean will write it. Who would like to review it?
I'll review it.
Rob will review it. Okay.
Good job, boys.
Okay. You're all set?
Great.
We'll write it within 90 days and then there's a 20-day appeal period.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll try to be fast. We have to wait for minutes.
Have a nice, nice day.
We're now going to move to 39 Coolidge Point Avenue. I move to open the public hearing for the application of David and Martha Swift for a special permit under sections 2.0, 4.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and their other relief as may be necessary to install an in-ground swimming pool with associated pool deck, fence, and landscaping at 39 Coolidge Point Avenue, assessors map number 3, lot number 27, and District E, filed with the town clerk on June 4, 2024. Do I have a second? Second. John seconds. Vote to open the public hearing. Georgia?
I made a motion to, oh my God, I'm sorry.
We're just voting.
I'm used to that, yeah, yes, open the public hearing.
John? Rob?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes. Okay. And you're going to present on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, good evening, Bob Griffin. We prepared the plans for some, and we're here on behalf of David and Martha and we apologize for not being able to be here for the reasons. Pretty straightforward project, as many of you saw who attended the site visit yesterday. The Swifts own an approximately 1.7 acre parcel on Coolidge Point. It's sort of long and narrow. And the location of the pool is really behind the house, so it really would be barely visible from Coolidge Point Avenue as you drive along. The dash line on this plan represents the accessory structure setback requirement. And you can see that the pool is going to be 32 feet away from the lot line as compared to the 15-foot requirement. So it's significantly braver than is necessary. The Swifts have engaged Tom McMullin, the landscape architect, to prepare a landscaping plan. We noticed at our site walk yesterday that there are a couple of trees in the pool patio area that will be removed for the project. But Mr. McMullin has designed new screening to be placed between the adjacent property at 37, I'm sorry, 43, Coolidge Point Road, to provide screening from that direction. Again, the house and the existing structures provide enough screening from this side to be consistent with the landscaping at the property, which is generally during. So it will be well, you know, well-screened from the neighborhood and from the neighbors. We don't require a whole lot of grading changes for this project. It's pretty flat back in that area right now. The pool is a pre-fabricated unit. It's 16 feet by 40 feet. It will be brought in by truck and placed in a hole. And then the bluestone patio surrounding the pool will be installed. The pool deck is approximately 1,800 square feet, so it's not particularly large. And the pool will be encircled with about 200 feet of fences, a four-foot tall fence, around the entire area to provide security for the pool. We meet all of the criteria listed in section 12.5.2 for the pool structure to be installed at a residential location. And of course, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Rob, do you have any questions?
No.
Sean?
No.
John, just so you, in case you don't remember, this is a site where we approved a sports court, not that one.
Okay.
Which was next to the septic.
Yeah, that you see the sport court on the real photograph here?
Yeah. That was a trend a couple of years ago.
Yeah. Post-COVID.
I remember this now. No, I don't have any questions about the proposal. I'll just, you know, I had to make sure that any lighting is, you know, downlighting and within the requirements of, you know, typical pool projects.
No lighting proposed.
Thank you.
No questions? I don't have any questions. Is there any member of the public in the room who wishes to speak on this application? Is there any member of the public on Zoom who would like to speak on this application? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom so you can be recognized. I don't see any hands raised. So what's the board's, oh, wait a minute. I'll go close the public hearing. I move to close the public hearing and enter into deliberations with respect to the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
John seconds. We're going on closing the public hearing. Rob?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Georgia? Sarah votes yes. Okay. What are the thoughts of the board on this application?
I'll go with it. Yeah. I have no issues with it. I don't have any problems with it.
With that, I will make a motion. I move to approve the application of David and Martha Swift for a special permit under sections 2.0, 4.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and their other relief as may be necessary to install a 16-foot by 40-foot in-ground swimming pool with associated pool deck, fence, and landscaping at 39 Coolidge Point Avenue, assessors map number 3, lot number 27, and District E, filed with the town clerk on June 4, 2024. Based on a finding that the proposed project to install a 16-by-40-foot in-ground swimming pool with an 1,800-square-foot bluestone pool deck, surrounded by a four-foot-high fence and associated landscaping, is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located, and the requirements and conditions under section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following conditions. The pool, bluestone, pool deck, patio, and fence are sighted as depicted on the plot plan for ZBA application prepared by Griffin Engineering Group LLC dated May 28, 2024. The pool and pool deck patio are enclosed by a fence at least four feet high, which conforms with the Manchester zoning bylaw, Manchester general bylaw, and Massachusetts building code. The pool may contain interior low-level LED lighting, but no additional exterior lighting. That's in case they change their mind. Landscaping shall be installed substantially as depicted in the landscape plan created by Tom McMullin, landscape architect, ASLA, revision dated 5/2/24. Do I have a second?
A second.
Sean seconds. Any vote? Rob?
Yes.
Sean? John? Georgia?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants to write this?
I can write this and the next one, too.
Okay.
Since I missed last month's meeting.
Okay. I'll review it if you want. Or do you want Georgia?
I was going to say I'm happy to review.
Let Georgia review it. Then she'll get to see the decision.
Okay, good.
Okay. Okay. The next application is for 39 Walker Road. I move to open the public hearing for the application of Environmental Pools, Inc. on behalf of Lower Garth for a special permit under sections 2.0, 4.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and their other relief as may be necessary to install an in-ground gonite swimming pool and spa with pervious patio surrounded by a four-foot-high black aluminum fence at 39 Walker Road, assessors map number 32, lot number 39, and District A, filed with the town clerk on June 17, 2024. Do I have a second to open the public hearing?
Second.
Rob seconds. Vote, Rob?
Yes.
John?
Approved.
John? Georgia? Is there somebody on Zoom who is going to present this application?
Yes, my name is Corey Everly with Environmental Pools.
Okay.
So we're looking to install a 16-by-36 in-ground gonite pool on the side and rear of the lot along with a 6-by-6 raised hot tub. The pool is going to have the automatic safety cover as well as a thermal tie-down cover on the hot tub for late-season use.
Can you clarify whether the pool is 16-by-36 or 16-by-32? The survey shows 16-by-32. Mr. Emily Houston-Williams?
Can you, yeah, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, sorry, we lost you. Okay, go ahead.
I apologize, I was looking at the wrong plant, another plant. Yeah, it is 16-by-32.
Okay, great.
Yep. And the hot tub will be 6-by-6 raised. So we're looking at adding about 1,300 square feet of pervious, or pervious paper to the project. So the whole patio back would be close to 2,000 square feet around the pool and spa and connecting back to the rear of the house. And then the backyard, I believe, as you met with John yesterday from my office, is relatively flat backyard, so there'll be no walls or anything like that, just standard landscape plan. Again, with the fence to surround the perimeter.
We were led to believe that there might be up to a two-foot boulder retaining wall on a portion behind the pool towards.
I'd like to, I'd like to, if we can, grade, essentially grade, but if needed, we'll have to do some sort of boulder wall, yeah.
Okay. Rob, any questions?
No questions.
John?
No questions.
John? No. Georgia?
I actually, I do have a question. So if you don't, it looks like the fencing is only on three sides and the boulder wall kind of acts as that, that fourth side of the fencing. So if you don't need the boulder wall or the grading can accommodate to meet level, do you anticipate adding a fence?
We'd be using the existing fence.
Okay.
So the fence is going from the existing fence on the property line and then is going to?
Tie it to the house in the far corner.
Okay, and the, and the rear goes beyond, beyond the existing patio and connects into the house?
Correct.
Okay. Any member of the public in the room wish to speak on this application? Any member of the public on Zoom would just speak on this application? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom. No hands raised. With that, I will move to close the public hearing and have the board enter into deliberations with respect to the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sean seconds. Vote to close the public hearing. Rob?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Georgia?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes. What's the board's thoughts on this application?
No concerns.
Same for me.
I mean, the fence goes to the house. You are planning on alarming the windows and the doors that lead out to the pool, correct?
Is that required with the automatic roof cover?
Yes. In Manchester.
It is, okay. Yeah, then, yeah, that will be using the door alarms on the doors and windows.
Okay. And those will be you all listed?
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Didn't need to leave my outside lens on. With that, I move to approve the application of Environmental Pools, Inc. on behalf of Lower Garth for a special permit under sections 2.0, 4.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and their other relief as may be necessary to install a 16-foot by 32-foot in-ground gonite swimming pool with a pervious paver patio and a 6-foot by 6-foot raised spa surrounded by a 4-foot-high black aluminum fence at 39 Walker Road, assessors map number 32, lot number 39, and District A, filed with the town clerk on June 17, 2024. Based on a finding that the proposed project to install the in-ground gonite swimming pool with a pervious paver patio and spa surrounded by a 4-foot-high black aluminum fence is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located, and the requirements and conditions under section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following conditions. The pool, pervious patio, spa, and fence are sighted as depicted on the proposed swimming pool plan prepared by Donahue, Donahoe Survey, Inc., dated June 13, 2024. The pool, spa, and patio are enclosed by a fence at least four feet high with self-locking gates connecting to an existing fence on the property line and the corners of the existing residence and alarmed entrance. and alarmed entrances from the house entering into the area, which conforms with the Manchester zoning bylaw, Manchester general bylaw, and the Massachusetts billing building code. The pool may contain interior low-level LED lighting of up to four lumens per square foot of pool surface. No additional exterior lighting shall be installed. And the pool will will contain an automatic cover. So if the building inspector determines the alarms are not required with an automatic cover, then they would not be required. Do I have a second?
Second.
Georgia seconds. Vote, Rob?
Yes.
John?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Georgia?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes. And John's gonna write this one?
I'll write this one, too.
Do you want to review it? Okay. That is all the applications we have tonight. Good news is we have no applications for August, so we will not be meeting in August. Get a month off.
Has that ever happened before?
Yeah. Not very often, but it always seems to be August when we don't get an application yet. People are on summer mode. Now, our newest alternate member, or associate member, I think it's the technical name, discovered that she has a conflict with the third Wednesday of the month after she accepted the appointment. Well, I'm suggesting that for the September and October meetings, we meet the fourth Wednesday of the month, which would be September 25th and October 24. We'll have to meet on the third Wednesday for November and December because of the holiday schedule. We don't want to meet the day before that. I don't want to meet the day before that. Okay. We did not receive the minutes from May 15th, so there's no minutes to review. I believe we have just decisions outstanding, all the decisions from May and June are outstanding, and we need the minutes in order to write those decisions. So you have any sense when we're gonna receive those minutes, Gail?
We talked about finishing the minutes for Doyle and May and June will come pretty quickly.
Because I'm running out of time on 90 School Street.
Okay, I will get 90 School Street to you.
Yeah, that was May, and so we're getting, we're getting towards the 90-day deadline.
I will get that to you next week.
Okay. The other thing that didn't get on this agenda which needs to be on the September agenda is to appoint a chair or reappoint a chair, as it may be. But it's not on the agenda, so I don't think it's appropriate for that tonight. So I will graciously continue to do it.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'll still look at me.
Anything else people have?
Any update with the 40B?
Oh, yeah, I can, I can let you know what's going on with 40B. So all of the briefs, so the HAC concluded its evidentiary hearing.
Yeah.
All of the briefs have been submitted by Town Council, the Council for the Intervener, I mean, just Essex Conservation Trust, and by the applicant. So everything is with HAC and has been with HAC since I think it was, they kept having to extend things because one of the attorneys was ill. I believe it was filed the end of May or first week in June. It's my underst, and so now it's with the HAC. It's my understanding they're not necessarily on a fast track. So we're not expecting to really hear from them until 2025.
Yeah.
That's kind of how it's been.
Okay.
What their history's been, but who knows? I don't know what their volume, volume is. But I know it took them three years to issue one. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Sean moves. Second?
Second.
Rob seconds. Vote to adjourn, Rob?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Georgia?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes. Thank you all.
Thank you.